Love thee with unsinning heart. Not till then will I fully know, Lord to thee, how much I owe. Think of that, standing before the Lord complete and being able to love Him with unsinning heart. We've never had that experience yet. We've never been able to worship the Lord in perfectly untainted fashion, uninterruptedly, and yet in glory, that will be so for us. Well, lovely picture here of this diverse group of men and women united together in the Lord, waiting on Him and praying. You notice that last phrase in verse fourteen, "and with his brothers." And you'll know that in the Gospels, the brothers very evidently didn't believe on the Lord. John, chapter seven, tells us explicitly, "For neither did his brethren believe in him." You know, they thought, well, of course, Jesus is getting some notoriety. He's becoming famous, kinda like a politician. And they told him in John seven, "Go up to the feast, because no man does the things you're doing and doesn't seek to be known." It's that old political mentality. You gotta get out there and press the flesh, right? Kiss a few babies, shake a lot of hands, make a speech, do a miracle here or there. And no doubt, they were thinking about the side benefits that would come to them. They could make up T-shirts, "I'm Jesus's brother," you know, or something like that. I don't know what these guys had in mind. But everything that they thought of was worldly, because he said to them, "You're of the world." And he said, "My time is not yet." It wasn't the Father's time for him to go up and for his time to be revealed, much less for the Lord to assume glory. The Lord didn't come the first time to assume His glory, for that would entail setting up His kingdom. The Lord came the first time to humble Himself, not to be served, but to serve and give His life a ransom for many, as Mark ten, I think it's forty-five, says to us, it may be forty-six. But in any case, our Lord came in humility, in meekness, in lowliness. Our Lord came with all approachability, and our Lord veiled His glory, except for a few instances where we see it peeking out, such as on the Mount of Transfiguration. Now, there was some unfinished business, however. One can't, oh, by the way, so to finish that point on the brothers, obviously, something happened from the Gospels till now. And what seems to have happened is that the brothers became convinced that the Lord Jesus Christ had risen. And 1 Corinthians fifteen specifically mentions that He appeared unto James, since that James is not mentioned with the twelve there. I think it's talking about James, the half-brother of our Lord, who later pops up in Acts fifteen in a prominent role and elsewhere in Acts two. Elsewhere in the book of Acts, I should say, not Acts, the number two, but also, is what I'm saying. Anyway, these brothers who didn't believe in the Lord before, who on one occasion thought He was crazy and would have tried to take Him away, they became convinced that the Lord Jesus was the Christ, the Son of the living God. And now they were numbered with the disciples. It took resurrection. By the way, probably the epistle of James is written by that same half-brother, and another half-brother, Jude, wrote the epistle of Jude. So we have two half-brothers of our Lord, very likely that the Holy Spirit used as His penman for those books. And yet, when you read the introductions, they talk about themselves as servants of the Lord Jesus. They don't mention that natural familial connection. As Paul explains in 2 Corinthians, "Even though we've known Christ after the flesh," in other words, we knew Him in His first coming here on earth, walking around. Now henceforth, we know Him no more. Our connection is spiritual to Christ and what the Lord is in His glorious work as our Messiah. So there was unfinished business, however, because we go through this list of apostles, and you find out there's one missing, right? And of course, we know who's missing. The man who in the lists, when the Gospels list the apostles, as they do several times, the always last in those lists is Judas Iscariot. And here, he's not in that list, because he's an apostate. He's one who stood away from the faith, and we know that that poor man ended his life in suicide. And so, they're now gonna turn to that question. We're no longer the twelve, we're the eleven. So verse fifteen says, "In those days, Peter stood up in the midst of the disciples; altogether the number of names were about a hundred and twenty." Now let me just pause a moment and say a word on numbers, that we can be very discouraged if we're putting our eyes on numbers. Don't get me wrong, I want lots of people to come to the Lord Jesus Christ. If I could get, you know, a stadium full of people to listen to me preach the Gospel, I'd do it, okay? And I'd love to see each and every one of them saved, and God is not willing that any should perish. He wants everyone to be saved and to come to a knowledge of the truth. The Bible is clear on that. So the problem isn't that God doesn't want the numbers, but the problem is that many, many people don't want the Lord. And even when our Lord was here on earth, He preached many sermons. We have five of them recorded for us in the Gospel of Matthew. And He did many signs and wonders. And you remember, multitudes followed Him, and the common people heard His words gladly. Could you fault anything in the Lord's ministry that He did? No, of course not. He's the perfect Son of God. So these were perfect messages. These were perfect signs and wonders, perfect works. He lived a life of perfection, and there was absolutely nothing wrong or deficient in His ministry. And yet, at the beginning of the book of Acts, how many believers could we number in the Lord Jesus Christ? About a hundred and twenty. Where were the multitudes? Now, it doesn't mean there weren't believers someplace else that couldn't be there with the disciples. That, of course, is possible. It doesn't mean that there aren't people, like we'll meet men in Acts nineteen, who responded to the baptism of John the Baptist, but then their spiritual education was cut short. They didn't hear the rest of the Gospel. They didn't know Jesus had come. They didn't know our Lord died on the cross and rose again from the dead and ascended back to heaven. So they had to have more light, which Paul in short order gives them in Acts nineteen. There were probably other people around, but there weren't many, is the point. You could pretty much put all the disciples in an upper room and call off the roll and get about a hundred and twenty of them. And that was after the Lord conducted a three-and-a-half-year perfect ministry. That means, brothers, and I don't mean we shouldn't examine ourselves, the Bible tells us we should do that at least weekly, right? And that's what the Lord's suffer in part is for. We examine ourselves in order to come there and remember the Lord. And we are to be daily looking and seeing, you know, now am I walking in the way that the Lord would be pleased with? Is Jesus Lord to me? Am I following the Lord and listening to Him, as the brothers prayed for this morning? So I'm not saying we excuse our deficiencies or that we're slack in how we walk. But sometimes, I've seen believers that are being faithful, that are doing what the Word of God says, and they are discouraged or disappointed because the numbers don't respond. Listen, that's not your job. Even the Lord Jesus Christ, at the end of that perfect ministry, had this comparatively small group of people. Now we'll see in the next chapter, there are other times when the Lord brings in a great harvest. So you may be sowing the seeds for a harvest in time to come. Or we may be the last generation that sees the Lord Jesus come back. We don't know. It's not our business, that's above our pay grade, as those in government work say. It's above our pay grade to worry about the times and seasons. The apostles were already told that in this chapter, that they're to be witnesses, and we are to be witnesses. So be faithful. Do what the Lord tells you to do. Keep the main thing the main thing, and let the Lord add daily those who are being saved. Let the Lord do His work, and let Him produce the fruit, because as the Lord told us in John fifteen, without Him, we can do nothing. Now Peter gets up to address this unfinished business of the missing apostle, and says in verse sixteen, "Men and brethren, this Scripture had to be fulfilled, which the Holy Spirit spake before by the mouth of David concerning Judas, who became a guide to those who arrested Jesus; for he was numbered with us and obtained a part of this ministry. Now this man purchased a field with the wages of iniquity, and falling headlong he burst open in the middle, and all his entrails gushed out." That's a little bit rough after breakfast, but I'm sure you men will bear up under it. Verse nineteen, "And it became known to all those dwelling in Jerusalem, so that field is called in their own language, Akeldama, that is field of blood. For it is written in the Psalms, Let his dwelling place be desolate, and let no one live in it, and let another take his office. Therefore of these who have accompanied us all the time, the Lord went in and out among us, beginning from the baptism of John..." Beginning from the baptism of John, "to the day when he was taken up from us, one of these must be a witness with us of his resurrection." Okay, so this is a very instructive message by Peter, a message to his brethren, to other believers, right? And it's chock-a-block full of Scripture. I mean, you look at how much he's referring back to the Old Testament, not only to explain what had happened. I mean, how do you explain that one of your intimate friends who traveled with you for years, you thought you knew him, you trusted him even with your wallet, and wallets can go missing at strange times and places, but you trusted this guy with your wallet. He was the group treasurer and carried the bag. But in any case, he turned out to be false. He was a traitor. And he, he was the one, of course, who, as Peter says here, became guide to those who arrested the Lord Jesus. And yet, Peter tells us right out of the gate, this is exactly what the Scripture foretold. Notice that wonderful touch. We get the doctrine of inspiration here in verse sixteen. This Scripture had to be fulfilled. Well, why? What's so important about the Scripture? Which the Holy Spirit spoke by the mouth of David. So we don't go back to the Old Testament writings and say, well, this was the writings of men. This was, David was a poetic genius, and look at these Psalms he wrote, or Moses was a great narrative storyteller, look at these books he wrote. Yes, the Lord used those men, but behind them was the Holy Spirit. As 2 Peter one twenty-one tells us, "That holy men of old spake as they were borne along by the Holy Spirit." The idea, the word picture there is like you're in a stream, being carried along by the current. So does it reflect these men, their personalities, their vocabularies, their background? Sure. You can find certain things that Luke says in the Gospel, according to Luke, that remind you, he's a doctor, or even here in the book of Acts, he's a doctor. And yet, the Holy Spirit is using those things in Luke to produce exactly the writing He wants, right down to the very words. And so what confidence we can have in the Bible, that it's not a product of men, it is by inspiration, it is God-breathed, given directly by the Holy Spirit through His servants. Now God had foretold this concerning Judas. It's interesting, sometimes you read, well, for instance, the Lord over and over said that Judas was going to betray Him. He said in John six, "That have not I chosen you twelve, and yet one of you is a demon." So the Lord knew from the beginning who would betray Him. And later, He would speak in the upper room in John thirteen, He would say, "Ye are clean, you all are clean." In other words, you're saved, but not all of you. There's one of you who isn't. And it comes to be clear, the Son of Perdition. And when the Lord prays in John seventeen, He says, "Father, of them which Thou hast given me, I have lost none; save the Son of Perdition, that the Scripture might be fulfilled." So this was all foreseen by God, foretold in the Scripture, but it was not predetermined by God in the sense that Judas had to do what he did without his will. In fact, John thirteen demonstrates that quite clearly, because when Peter, and my friend Gordon Franz likes to say, at that moment, they're sitting around in like a, almost like a horseshoe-type formation, and Peter, sitting across from John, flips and all about him, that's what Gordon likes to say, and gets John's attention. But John thirteen says that Peter, you know, beckoned John to ask the Lord Jesus of whom he spake. Now John sits right next to the Lord. They recline on their left arm, because your left hand in the Middle East, you do things that are dirty with, okay? That's not the polite hand to offer something to someone with, in that culture, even to this day. And you eat out of a common plate or bowl with your right hand. You kinda stake off your little part of it, you got your pita bread or whatever, and you dig in and eat. Now, they still do this in parts of the Middle East. If you go, you know, you New Yorkers are blessed, you can go eat at an Ethiopian restaurant, or a Moroccan restaurant, or Middle Eastern restaurants, of various descriptions, and they'll serve some of the courses like this. And even in southern Spain, when I was there, they would do this. They'd put out this big plate, and they'd say, "Pika." And so you'd kind of pick out your little spot on the plate, and you'd eat off of that. Well, there's John, he's at the part of the table that's near the Lord, so he can lean back. That's what it means when it says, "He reclined on the Lord's bosom." It doesn't mean that John was some kinda sissy boy, hanging all over the Lord all the time, like, "Oh, Lord, I just love..." No, that wasn't it. He's seated at the table where he is reclining at table. That's how Darby likes to translate the word seated, and it's quite, quite right, according to the Greek. And he leans back, and he's able to ask the Lord, "Lord, who's gonna betray you?" And the Lord says, "It is he to whom I give the sop." Now what was that? Well, I have a brother and friend in the Lord, who for a long time was a missionary in Ethiopia, or for some years at least, and he tells me that even to this day, in Ethiopia, they have this custom. They set aside some of the choicest morsels of food, and then they can take a bit of whatever their kind of bread is, and they pick it up and they offer it to the guest of honor. And that they say by that, it's an expression of friendship and of loyalty. And in fact, by the Lord dipping in the dish with this person and offering it to him, Judas must have been on the other side of the Lord Jesus, which is the place of friendship at the table. You put the guest of honor next to you there at the table. This is according to people that know the ancient cultures. And again, many of these things still come down to our day. So when the Lord marked out the traitor, He did it in a way that said, "Judas, I'll be your friend. Judas, I'm offering you love. Judas, I know you're gonna betray me. That's what you have in your heart to do. But you don't have to go through with it. Even now, I'm offering you my friendship." And Judas took it, and obviously, he didn't fall down before the Lord and confess. He committed himself to that course. Satan entered into him to make sure he would carry it all the way through, and he went out, and John thirteen says it was night, a night for Judas that never knew any dawning. Imagine that. The Lord said all the time, you know, a thousand years before it happened, He prophesied through David what would happen, and the Lord Himself in His ministry knew it all along. And yet, up to the very last instant, He's reaching out in grace, saying, "You can repent. You can trust Me." And apostasy and unbelief, and ultimately reprobation and damnation is on man's side, not God. Man makes the decision to go to hell. Man makes the decision to reject the Lord. It's not any lack of opportunity or any lack of love that the Father, or the Son, or the Spirit elicit for mankind. Now Judas did his thing, and in one sense, if history was just about human action, and we were controlling where this world would go, think of what a terrible portent this would be. But here, one of the Lord's closest followers betrayed him. And yet Peter's saying to them, "Look, God knew it all the time." And rather than thwart God's purpose, this actually helped God achieve His purpose. And we're gonna find the same thing in Acts two, when he speaks of Christ being delivered up by the determinate counsel and foreknowledge of God. That doesn't sanction the way man treated the Lord Jesus Christ. That doesn't say it's right or that God approves of that. It doesn't mitigate their sin. But it does say, "God knew it all along, and like Joseph said, what ye meant for evil, God meant it for good." God's able to turn the thing to good. Thank you so much. You brethren ought to give thanks for my wife, because now we won't go overtime grossly. You know, I won't have to preach till someone falls out the window, because she delivered, delivered my speaking watch. My regular watch is in the shop, so I'm having to go on backups. But anyway. Notice how he describes what Judas did, though. He says that he was numbered with us, verse seventeen, "and obtained a part in this ministry." Now think of that. The word ministry there is just the word for service. It's related to that word deacon, same Greek root. And Judas had this privilege to be numbered among the apostles, I mean, to be one of the twelve. When we read about the apostles and what the Lord intends for them, in Matthew nineteen, Peter says, "Behold, we've left all to follow you; what shall we get?" And the Lord says, "In the regeneration, when the Son of Man sits on his throne of glory, then will you sit on twelve thrones, judging the twelve tribes of Israel." Think of that, that future millennial kingdom we spoke about, and seemingly beyond into the eternal state, here are these apostles that have part in the administration of the government of Messiah, the King of kings and Lord of lords, the Lord Jesus Christ. Revelation twenty-one, I believe it's verse fourteen, tells us that there were twelve foundations at the New Jerusalem, and on those foundations, the names of the twelve apostles of the Lamb. Now think of it. Today, if you speak about, you know, Sergi Brin and Larry Page, okay? I gotta keep the nerds among us happy. So you can, you can say those names, and in certain circles, people sort of say, "Oh, wow." You know, the guys who founded Google, who started in their dorm room, as the legend has it, I think at Stanford University, and who, you know, were at the beginning of bringing forth this company that has had such an effect on the entire world, on every level of society, pretty much. I think about being one of those guys. Now, I understand that Google, at one time at least, they had a classification for their employees that told you how early in the company, I hope this isn't an air raid, but anyway, they had a classification. Sorry for the recording, their plane's going overhead, but anyway. They had a classification that somehow indicated, okay, you were the third guy in the company. You were the first guy Sergi and Larry hired, or you were the fourth guy, or you were the twentieth, or the fortieth, and it could have been a gal, you know, it could have been a woman. So anyway, by this classification, you would know how long this person's been with the company. Well, like the first forty, fifty people of that company are mega-millionaires, all right? Because they, at least if they kept their stock options, they are, because they were there at the beginning. And you say, "Wow." People in the tech world and in the business world, they look at that, and they say, "What would it be like to be part of something that got that big at the beginning? What would it be like going back to a former generation to work in Thomas Edison's labs, you know, and develop all the wonderful inventions they did, to say, 'I worked on that.'" Well, think of it. This is the government of Messiah, the Son of God. What would it be like to be one of the twelve? What a privilege to be numbered among the twelve and have part in that service. But Judas left that, of course, because he never believed on the Lord Jesus Christ. He was the Son of Perdition, as the Lord called it. The only other person in Scripture, at least in the New Testament, called Son of Perdition, and I'm not aware of anybody in the Old, but there may be, but the only other one in the New Testament is the man of sin in 2 Thessalonians two, who is coming in in the tribulation period. So it's a bad thing to get that moniker. Now this man, verse eighteen says, "Purchased a field with the wages of iniquity." What irony in that sentence. What did Judas get out of betraying Christ? Well, he got money, right? Thirty pieces of silver, the price of a slave, under the law. And he got thirty pieces of silver, and we know he didn't really live to spend it. You remember in Matthew twenty-eight, he comes, no, Matthew twenty-seven, excuse me, he comes before the high priest there, and he says, "I've sinned in that I've betrayed innocent blood." Now these men show where they're at spiritually, because you would think that the priests would care about this, that number one, they are to be people that represent God before the people and the people before God. They are to be people that teach the law. So here comes a man confessing sin, as well as confessing the horrible crime of being complicit in delivering an innocent man to death. You would think they would wanna make that right, not only publicly and legally, but that they'd help this man repent and seek forgiveness from God. But their answer is, "What is that to us?" And that's the thing about unbelievers who are leaders in religions. They're not shepherds. Jeremiah and Ezekiel and Zechariah talk about false shepherds, and sometimes they're referring to kings, sometimes they're referring to priests, sometimes they're referring to prophets, depending on the context. But people that are supposed to be leaders, who don't care about the flock. The Lord Jesus was very different, wasn't He? When He saw the multitudes, Matthew tells us, "He had compassion on them, because they were like sheep without a shepherd." We'll sing of the shepherd that died, that died for the sake of the flock. His love to the utmost was tried, yet firmly endured as a rock. When blood from a victim must flow, this shepherd by pity was led, to stand between us and the foe, and willingly died in our stead. There's no shepherd like the good shepherd, the great shepherd, the chief shepherd. He has all those titles in Scripture. No one like the Lord Jesus who cares for His people. Judas didn't get any help from the priests, and he cast down the money there, and they, with amazing sanctimonious hypocrisy, they say, "Well, we can't take this money and put it in the treasury. We can't use it for temple purposes, it's blood money. So what do we do with it? Well, let's buy a field with it to bury strangers in it." Isn't that interesting? Even in the money that was used to betray the Lord Jesus, there was something that made provision for strangers. And so often in the Old Testament, the Lord was caring for and exhorting us to care for the stranger, along with the widow and the orphan, that the Lord would make a place for people who have no place. The Lord would give an inheritance to people who have no inheritance, to a people that are without God, without the covenants, without promises, God would extend grace and mercy. And of course, in the Lord Jesus Christ, we Gentiles especially, we can say that. "I was a stranger, but Jesus took me in. The Lord took me and blessed me, and has given me so, so much," we can say. Now, instead of getting to enjoy spending that money on a nice vacation to Puerto Rico or someplace, Judas didn't get to spend it. It was used to buy that field of blood. And instead, he, as it says, "Falling headlong, he burst open in the middle, and his entrails gushed out." Now we don't read about that in the Gospels. We read about Judas going out and hanging himself. And I only mention this here, because sometimes you get skeptics who normally are very shallow readers of the Bible. Now, there are some skeptics that are careful readers of the Bible, and they bring difficult arguments to bear. So we have to be people of the book. We have to be digging deeper into the Bible, okay? But a lot of the people that we might run into commonly in our life are people that haven't read too much of the Bible, but they've heard this or that. And they say things like, "Well, the Bible's full of historical errors." Like what? Well, here, it says Judas's guts burst out, that's how he died. In the Gospels, it says that Judas went out and hung himself. Well, it's not very difficult to reconcile those things. I had a few cousins who were state policemen. And one of them had a strange, sorry, not state police, local police, one became the police chief. One of them had a strange habit of bringing crime scene photos to Christmas. Now, I, being a little child, was not permitted to look at these, okay? But he would bring these... Uh, but he would bring these and like, you know, show my dad. Now, my dad, who gutted many a deer in his day and, uh, was not squeamish in the slightest, he still wasn't interested in crime scene photos. Because some of the things they would find, they'd go out and find, say, a suicide victim in the woods, somebody who hung himself. And the thing about, uh, people that are hanging up, who are dead, and even corpses in general, they tend to become bloated. You know, the juices and the gases as the body decays and breaks down, it swells up. And I'm not trying to be overly graphic here, except to say that that fits in perfectly with the image of a man who hangs himself, but for some reason, the branch breaks, the rope breaks, whatever, and his dead body falls down and his guts gush out all over the place. Or maybe he did it on the edge of a cliff, as some have suspected. There's various possibilities to how this can be reconciled. There's no error here, you know, in what the Bible says about Judas. But think about what a judgment that is. This man was filled with corruption inside. And so what happened? The corruption came out of him eventually. It's a bit like King Jehoram in the Old Testament, who was so obdurate against the Lord, so antagonistic, so stubborn and evil, and so given to idolatry, that God struck him with a painful disease in his intestines, and day by day, his entrails came out, you know? He died this horrible, defiling death. If you give yourself to corruption, you'll be filled with corruption. And if you don't repent and seek salvation from the Lord, you'll die, and that corruption will be evident before all. What a horrible thing. He says there, verse nineteen, "It became known to all those dwelling in Jerusalem, so that the field is called in their own language, Akeldama, that is, field of blood." And Matthew tells us the same. So here's another little touch of Acts' historicity, that this is a real historical book, because everybody in Jerusalem knew this. You could go out and check the facts. If you weren't from Jerusalem, you could go ask somebody, "Hey, where's the field of blood?" "Oh, yeah, it's over there." "Well, where'd that come from?" "Well, you know, this guy Judas betrayed Jesus, and then his conscience got to him, and he threw down the money, and the priests used it to buy this field." So, it would be confirmation of the historicity. But again, what happened to him was prophesied in the Psalms. "Let his dwelling place be desolate, and let no one live in it." The Son of Perdition, you think of the desolateness of being lost. See, being lost isn't, "I'm going to hell and party with my friends." No. Being lost is being eternally lonely, just cut off from all that makes life worth living. No light, no love, no goodness, because those things ultimately emanate from God. And the person who's lost is cut off into alder darkness. But the last phrase of verse twenty is key, "Let another take his office." So, already the Lord knows not only the betrayer and what's going to happen to him exactly, but he prophesies in the Old Testament, somebody else has to step up and take his place. God had appointed twelve to be eyewitnesses of the ministry of the Lord, beginning at the ministry of John the Baptist, to his death and resurrection, to his ascension, people that could testify to having seen, heard, and interacted with the Lord Jesus, his chosen witnesses. And as I said from Matthew nineteen, these are men who are gonna have a part in the future kingdom glory of the Lord, responsibility, and their names are gonna be written on the foundations of the New Jerusalem in Revelation twenty-one. So, God doesn't say, "Ah, please scratch that bit out," you know, "'cause I had one who didn't turn out well. I had to, you know, this one, he betrayed me and left, so now we've gotta go with eleven. I guess we'll have eleven thrones judging Israel." No. Sinful man cannot make the Lord his purpose forego. They cannot change God's plans for what he's going to do in his own kingdom. There's gotta be a twelfth man, and twelve, the number in the Bible often of administration, you can think about the twelve tribes of Israel, the twelve apostles, and so forth. And so, there's gonna be a twelfth man they need to pick up, who, according to verses twenty-one and twenty-two, was someone who had accompanied them throughout the Lord's ministry, as I said, from the baptism of John all the way up through the ascension, when he was taken up from us. One of these must be a witness of his resurrection. Now, that is the indispensable qualification for an apostle, an apostle in this technical sense. There are a couple places in the New Testament where the word apostle is used, and we might say it's small a, in the sense that it's more like a missionary. Apostle means one who is sent out, okay? And so, an apostle, or sent away, I should say. And so, an apostle is someone sent out by the Lord, and there are a few apostles referred to who we think of in modern terms as missionaries. But usually, when the New Testament speaks of apostles, it's using it in this technical term of an eyewitness of the resurrection of Christ. That's why these men were foundational. You say, "Well, what about Saul?" And I should say, some people here have said that, "Well, the apostles acted wrongly here, because obviously, God picked Saul in Acts nine to be an apostle, and he's really the twelfth apostle." Well, Saul didn't think so. Let's look at First Corinthians fifteen a moment. For, I deliver, verse three, "For I delivered to you, first of all, that which I also received, that Christ died for our sins according to the Scriptures, and that he was buried, and that he rose again the third day according to the Scriptures, and that he was seen by Cephas," that's Peter, of course, "then by the twelve. After that, he was seen by over five hundred brethren at once, of whom the greater part remain to the present, but some have fallen asleep." Verse seven, "After that, he was seen by James," that's the half-brother of the Lord, "then by all the apostles. Then, last of all, he was seen by me also, as one born out of due time." So clearly, he makes a distinction here between the twelve and himself. He is an apostle, he's an equal apostle, he has an equally important ministry, but a totally different mission than what the twelve had in how God was going to use Saul uniquely. So, I don't believe the apostles was, were wrong. First of all, there's nothing in the context of Acts one to indicate that they were wrong. The Holy Spirit doesn't give us one phrase that would say they acted precipitously. Remember, they were waiting, praying, and supplicating the Lord. Now, not that we can't pray and ask for the wrong things, or not that we can not, uh, wrongfully interpret the Lord's answer to prayer. We, of course, are capable of error, and so were they. Well, there's nothing in the passage to indicate that. "They proposed these two men, Joseph called Bar-Sabas, who was surnamed Justice, and Matthias; and they prayed and said, 'You, O Lord, who know the hearts of all, show which of these two you have chosen, to take part in the ministry and apostleship from which Judas, by transgression, fell, that he might go to his own place.'" And they cast their lots, excuse me, and the lot fell on Matthias, and he was numbered with the eleven apostles. So now, we've got number twelve being numbered with them, uh, Matthias. Proverbs sixteen, in the last sentence, uh, says that the lot is cast into the lap and has the thought of it's an end of dispute. And here, they used lots, and the Lord providentially used that means to indicate. Now, someone has pointed out, after the coming of the Holy Spirit in Acts chapter two, you don't see them resorting to lots anymore. So that's rather, I think, a, an Old Testament way of discerning the Lord's will, but it's something the Lord used in this instance. In any case, we see Matthias added. Well, some people will say, "Well, we don't read about Matthias doing anything." No, but nor do we read about James, the son of Alpheus, doing anything, or a lot of the other apostles. In history, history tells us they did things, but we're not explicitly told what their service was. The Lord knows it, and the Lord will reward it. But the fact that it's not recorded doesn't in any way cast aspersion on his apostleship. Okay, any questions or comments before we break? Yes, sir? Yeah. Well, the Lord said that the Scripture might be fulfilled. So, the Lord knew that there must be a betrayer, that somebody had to hand him over. And if it hadn't been Judas, it would have been somebody else. And I don't even, uh, necessarily think the Scriptures demanded it be one of the twelve. We know the Lord had more disciples that the Gospels speak about. In fact, John six talks about many disciples who followed him when he talks about eating his flesh and drinking his blood. They said, "This is a hard saying, who can know it?" And they follow him no more. So there are a lot of people that attach themselves to the Lord and said they're disciples, but when the chips were down, the reality wasn't there. They were like tares rather than wheat. So, the Lord picked Judas, knowing what Judas would do, knowing that in spite of his entreaties, Judas would deny him, and Judas would refuse to believe, and Judas would betray him. But this all played out according to how the Scripture said it would, that he would be delivered up, and the Lord said this in Matthew sixteen, "The Son of Man is going up to Jerusalem and will be delivered into the hands of the elders, who will treat him, you know, badly and abuse him, basically, and then give him to the Romans, and he'll be crucified." He keeps adding to that as they're going up to Jerusalem. He keeps telling the apostles more detail. So in retrospect, we can look back and say, "This wasn't accidental, this wasn't the Lord being taken unawares. He went to Calvary intentionally, went to that cross on purpose, and all these machinations of men behind the scenes to get rid of him and to destroy him, they were not only ineffectual, they were turned by God to put the Lord on the cross. And when men had done their worst to him on the cross, then God drew that veil about the Son. There was that darkness for three hours, and the Lord laid on him the iniquity of us all, as Isaiah fifty-three says." So it's as if God says, "All right, you guys have shown what you thought of him now. Now I'm going to take him and make him the lamb of God who takes away the sin of the world." So it doesn't condone the evil and the betrayal, but it does say, "God knew about it all along," and rather than it boarding God or hindering God, God uses it actually, and, uh, is able to bring forth his purposes. Does that make sense? Okay, well, you can mulled that over, brother. Yes, sir? Right. Uh, yes, I suppose so. That's a supposition on my part, but it seems like the Lord, there's no doubt the Lord's expressing friendship and love to him there while also identifying him. You know, the Lord could have said, "It's Judas Iscariot." And what do you think would have happened at the table? The apostles would have gone wild, right? But instead, when Judas goes out, they still don't fully understand. They suppose that the Lord told him to go buy something for the feast, right? So they don't, it's only later that they look back and say, "Wait a minute, that's what the Lord was trying to tell us." But Judas knows that Jesus knows, and the Lord Jesus knows what Judas is gonna do, and that's written down for us there in John thirteen. So, yeah, Judas had a choice all the way along. You know, he could have believed, and it just is a solemn thing. It shows us, light can shine on an unbeliever, and you can be at all the right places, hearing the right messages, and Judas even participated in preaching, because the Lord sent out the twelve, and he participated in miracles, because the Lord, again, had the twelve helping with some of those miracles and doing some of those miracles. And, and yet, he didn't repent and believe on the Lord. Was someone over here, Brother Henry? Yes, sir? Yes. Yeah. Yes. Amen. Yes. Amen. Yes, sir? That's right. Mm-hmm. Right. No. Yes, that's right. Mm-hmm. Yes, amen. Right. No, that's right. Amen, amen. That's right, that's Ephesians two, the found, the, uh, churches build on the foundation of the apostles and the prophets, Jesus Christ himself being the chief cornerstone. And pursuant to Brother Henry's first point, that the Lord was a friend to the end to Judas, when it talks about Judas betraying him in John thirteen, it quotes Psalm forty-one, I think it's verse nine, "Mine own familiar friend has betrayed me, has lifted up the heel against me," is the, is the phrase, which indicates betrayal. So, even there, he's called my familiar friend, you know, this was someone close to the Lord. Uh, Michael Card wrote a song some years ago about Judas, and he said, um, he said, "Only a friend..." Why, he asked the question in the song, "Why did it have to be a friend who chose to betray the Lord?" And he answers that question later in the song. He says, "Uh, only a friend comes close enough to ever cause so much pain." You know, so, we think of what the Lord endured, that, uh, some of you have probably endured betrayals by friends, maybe by a spouse even, or even by people in the church, and that's such a hurtful thing. It's one of the most difficult experiences a human being can go through. But our Lord went through it, and he was still loving toward mankind, and even toward his enemies. So, it's a great example to us, isn't it? Okay, well, we can have more questions and comments, then we'll have, uh, a full group discussion time at eleven-thirty, but let's take our break now, and, uh, I'll just close this quickly in prayer. Father, we thank thee for these Scriptures we've seen already, and already we've seen the beauty of our Lord and what he's done for us, and that he came with eyes wide open to what was facing him, that he wasn't ignorant of what he would have to suffer, but rather this was known thousands of years before in the Scripture, and it was known from eternity past by the Son of God. And so, we know he did all this intentionally, and we thank thee for what he was willing to suffer in our place. And we thank thee that he won't suffer again, that he's risen, and that he's coming back in glory and in power. And so, we would seek to learn of him today, in the Lord Jesus' name. Amen.